Well, the good ones are here already.
Yes, we've got, we've got a good group gathered, so we might as well start. So hello, and I think our first item, I'll jump right into reviewing the minutes and I will share that with you all. I have it up. So let me know if you want me to, I'll just kind of slowly scroll. Let me know if there's any things that need to be addressed.
Well, I had, I had a couple of things, but does somebody want to go first? No?
I'm okay.
All right, so Linda, under the budget in the second paragraph, number one, so I would cut out the word level. So number one, with the MAR funded. And option number two will be to ask for more than one. And I would cut out the hope that they settle on one and we will then meet the MAR. Because both of them are the, meet the MAR.
Okay, so repeat the second thing again.
All right, so you got the first thing is cut the word level. Because it's not a level funded budget. Anyway, I would cut out in the hope that they will settle on number one and we will then meet the MAR. I would cut that.
Okay.
Because one and two both meet the MAR.
Okay, so it ends at number one.
Yes.
Got it.
And then, I don't know if you want to add this, but the trustees asked me to look into the state law concerning the MAR. Do you want to add that line? Oh, you don't, but that came out of the meeting. So if you want to.
The trustees asked Barbara to look into.
The state law regarding the MAR.
Okay. Good job.
Okay, a little thing is under videos, I put check our staff member Emily's latest video. Just reads a little.
Sentence I've ever written. I don't know what happened. Reading it, I don't know, did I just?
And then the last thing I have is about the SORA. So this is complicated, the SORA thing.
I was listening to myself talk, so can you repeat about the videos?
Oh, the videos. Check our staff member Emily's latest video.
Oh, okay.
Instead of check Emily.
Yeah, no, check Emily. You can't check her out. She's anyway.
Okay, all right, got it.
Okay, so under from Johanna, SORA, just a little complicated, I think, but so. Um, I would cross out the sentence you have. And I'd put Johanna worked with Mass Library System to enable Norris School to be part of the SORA program. So their students can access CW Mars eBooks through our library. You want me to repeat that, Linda?
Yeah, hold on.
It's complicated.
I'm glad Linda's writing this. Okay, Johanna worked with Mass Library System.
Right.
To enable Norris School to be part of the SORA system. That's as far as I got.
So they can act, so their students can access CW Mars eBooks.
The CW Mars?
Um, so they, so the students can access CW Mars eBooks through our library.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Which is pretty amazing, actually.
I know, I want, you know, it's a really big thing, so at least it's a good thing.
Just one more amazing thing, Barbara.
Thank you. Johanna had a lot to do with that. And Patty Murray. Patty Murray is the children's librarian at Norris. I think most of you probably knew that.
She used to be a trustee also.
Short time, right?
Yeah. Briefly. But she did serve on the board, so.
Yeah.
Any other changes or additions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I shall move. Make a motion. Oh, okay. Second.
Convy? All right, we're gonna do our roll call. So Maxine?
She has her mic off.
Okay, Jessica, I. Jim?
I.
Debbie?
I.
Faith?
Yes.
Beth?
I.
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Yes.
Mark? Convy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
All right. So moved. So move into our next item. Welcome. I feel like I went back to the big screen and a whole bunch more faces were here, so good to see you all.
How many do I have?
So we reviewed the minutes. I don't think that we have any committee reports. Any, anyone disagree? I mean, budget, finance technically, but that's its own item. Okay. Still no updates from the Friends, I assume, or is anything happening there?
No, except that Johanna's contacted the president of the Friends, Terry Peliquin, who's gonna do a sip and paint in the summer.
Okay. And are they the ones doing the book sale, the grab bags? I've gotten a few.
No, we're, we're doing that, but Candy and Nikki's very active. She's the treasurer and she's, she's given us some money when we needed it, like for the, one of Johanna's programs for the food. And she's, the Friends said that it was okay to use the books that were donated for the book sale. So we got their permission.
Okay. Sounds good. And so we'll move on from there quickly. And we've got the director's report, so I'll bring that up again.
Yeah, just to clarify, we were collecting books for the book sale before the shutdown. So there's a lot of boxes of donated books in the, in the meeting room. That's what we're pulling from. But we're really not accepting any more donations right now. People ask, but generally, we're not. Okay, so all Hampton's Reads is coming together. I've, as you know, I've been meeting with other local directors every two weeks through the whole pandemic. And besides discussing COVID, we have been working on the Hampton Reads. So the, I never heard of it, but the Becum Tuck Valley Memorial Association got a grant from the Big Reads. We got that once, the Hampton Reads. So they got a grant from the Big Reads and they were having a big, like, I think 250th anniversary this year. So they had a whole lot of things planned. And unfortunately, the, you know, the pandemic messed that up. But they had picked Station 11, the book Station 11, before the pandemic. And it actually happens to have a pandemic in it, which is interesting. So there's a lot of people that have joined this Big Read Becum Tuck Valley deal. So the local libraries that we're part of, the Hamptons have joined them. And then there's a bunch of libraries called Libraries in the Woods, which includes like Northfield and Shoots Berry and all those. And I think there's a lot of libraries in that group. And then there's other sponsors, a couple of places from Springfield. So I'll have all the names when the press release is done. But the events, most of them are March, April, and I think some in May. And Station 11 was written by Emily St. John Mandel. And I finished it. I really liked it. I didn't think I would actually. It's not a book I would have picked up, but I really got into it. So the book club with Johanna will be talking about it on April 27. And we have a, our library is sponsoring a Zoom event, which everybody will have access to, with Rosie McMahon on trauma-informed care during COVID. And then I explained it a little bit. So I went to a workshop on trauma-informed care, also called Something to do with Resiliency, with a few other library directors and people from all over. And that's how I found out about this. And I, it was really interesting. So she's going to talk about trauma-informed care, informed care, and encourage participants how to take care of their mental health and wellbeing during a pandemic. So what's really exciting is the book's author is gonna be live on Zoom. And this is a very expensive thing to bring in one of these authors for these Big Reads. But because of the grant that Becum Tuck Valley got, they're able to afford to bring her. So unfortunately, it'll be on Zoom. But there'll be 500 slots to go hear it. And then they're gonna record it and it'll be available for a certain amount of time. I read an interview with her. She's very interesting. She's quite young. And she grew up on a very tiny island off Vancouver Island in British Columbia. So when you read the book, you'll see how that influences the writing, because a couple of characters in the book are also from a very small island off Vancouver Island. And there's other things that relate to her, her life. Let's see.
Do you have the books in the library to?
We, we can get them for you and I'm also gonna order some. But yeah, there, there's quite a few in the system. And I, I mean, we own a copy, a large print and a book on CD, but I am planning to buy 15 or 20. But we're not, all the libraries aren't buying like hundreds like we usually do, because there are quite a few in the system. So if you want, you can start ordering it now, if you'd like. And and as you'll see later, Johanna has a program tying into it also.
It's gonna be an HBO show.
Excuse me?
It's gonna be an HBO show.
Is it really?
Yeah.
When is that?
As soon as, as soon, the show about the pandemic can resume filming as soon as the pandemic's over. I think.
Can you read, did you read that somewhere or?
It was on the Wikipedia page.
Oh, wow. You know what? I was, I'm not surprised, because it's very visual. And I was thinking that it would be made into some kind of movie or something. So it's gonna be an HBO special?
A 10-episode mini-series.
A 10-episode mini-series. Wow.
After this pandemic is over, I don't want to hear anymore about pandemics.
Actually, you go, it got, the beginning's about the pandemic, but really, it's about life after the pandemic. And it's, there's a traveling troupe of actors and musicians who go from settlement to settlement, performing. And you meet a lot of characters along the way. It's, it's really very interesting to see what her vision is. The reason she did the pandemic was because she wanted to get to a world where people didn't have electricity or devices. She wanted to explore what happens when people don't have any of that.
You mean like how we grew up?
No, even, even worse. I mean, no cars, no, nothing that has to do with electricity, no airplanes, no, you know, none of it. And how, how it all shakes out. So, so that relates, I think, to her growing up on this tiny island, you know, it's kind of reflective of that. Um, any questions about, Paul Hampton's Reads?
No, it sounds great.
I, yeah, I was sorry when it ended. I mean, I really wanted to hear what happened after that. Maybe they'll tell us in the mini-series. So actually, I'm listening to her new book, which is about a Ponzi scheme, which is like totally different than the other one. And, and I think she's a really good writer. Okay, the boiler, the heat went off Tuesday and Wednesday this week. Keith David from RK Solutions came. By the way, RK Solutions was, is now part of a larger company, which I can't remember the name of. But it's the same to us, really, the same people. So he came both days and he showed me the part that needs replacement and I, he called today. It's $550 for their new part. So.
You gotta get.
Yeah, I talked to Ed and Ed said, you know, to get it. And I, I emailed Ed today and I said, well, are we going in front of the Capital Improvement Committee, you know? What are we doing about it? But I haven't heard back. I just did that today. So the budget, I sent the budget to Ed after our meeting, soon after our meeting on the 27th. And then three trustees, Jessica, Debbie, Maxine, and I went to the Finance Committee on Zoom. We were, we were half an hour after the senior center on the 24th. And I thought they asked very good questions. Jessica, Debbie, and Maxine, you can add to this if you want. And then February 26, I sent a page of answers to them with some, you know, explaining some of the things they asked about. We don't have a date as to the Select Board, when they're gonna be discussing the budget recommendations. And, and this concerns me. I would like to know the date. But I'm not sure yet. I, I emailed Ed and he said the Finance Committee was still meeting. But last time, I didn't find out till the night before. So if we want all the trustees who want to come to be able to come, we'll have to post it two days ahead. So if I don't find out till the night before, you know. Well, anyway.
I did want to say, Barbara, I did want to say about the Friends Committee, I felt you did a really good job of explaining everything on the MAR. And the, and the consequences of us not meeting it. And I felt like they all really understood how you got to the number and, you know, the need to really stay at the number that we need and the fact that we have to make up. Every year, we fall behind. We gotta make it up. And, and we're gonna fall further and further behind if we don't stay on top of it.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought they asked really good questions. And even though most of them are new, I thought they, I was pretty impressed with them. So Jim, you, you, you know Ken Cole, right? He's the chair. And.
Yes. I had to think for a minute, but yes.
Yeah, at the last meeting, you said, and I didn't realize it, but he and his wife actually were there today. I didn't realize when you mentioned him that, now I know who they are. They're regular patrons. And two other people are regular patrons or were regular patrons. Rachel Dion used to come with her kids all the time and they both volunteered at the library. And Barbara Semborski is a patron. So I don't think I've ever seen a committee in the town hall that had as many library patrons on it, but you know.
That's good. That is good.
I will, I, I think too, with the joint committee posting, that, that is a little like tough with the timing, if we need to do it ahead of time. But I don't know that we would need more than six people there anyway. So I think we could, we could shoot to, to point the, to, to post as a joint meeting. But I agree with what Debbie said. I think that you explained it really well. And on top of that, I think they were really receptive to it. I didn't really see anyone balk at those numbers. I mean, I know we're gonna be in a tight situation, so everything could be on the line. But they really did seem to get it. And which says a lot, because it is complicated, you know, what's expected with the MAR.
Yeah, but the Select Board is a totally different thing. Select Board meeting is totally different. And they don't necessarily have to accept the Finance Committee budget.
Right.
No, they don't. But I think it's good if you have the Finance Board on your side.
Oh, yeah. No, it's great. It's great. But I would like to see at least, you know, I would, I think that second meeting with the Select Board, there were seven trustees there. And that was good. I mean, I think that it was just so awful last time when I didn't have any trustees there on the first one. And you guys didn't see what happened. So I didn't, you know, I.
I think it's good just to show support. And in the past, when we've attended in-person meetings and the whole group of us was there, it just sends a good message to the Select Board.
Yes, definitely. I agree.
So, so then with that being said, what's our recourse if they don't tell us until the day before? Like, I don't, that's when I'm having trouble wrapping my head around.
Then we can only have six people come, I guess. I'm doing my best.
What you could, excuse me, what you could do is preemptively post it as a joint meeting. And if there's need to be, you can always cancel it at the last minute.
But we have to put it, we have to put a date in there, right, Jim?
Boy, I mean, you know, when the Select Board is meeting, usually it's on a Tuesday.
Well, sometimes it's a Thursday.
Okay.
But they post their stuff early.
Yeah. And I'm sure you know that if you contacted Ed, well, either Ed or I'm even thinking of, excuse me, my, my.
Lucy? Lucy?
Well, Lucy, I was thinking of, of Tishman.
Francine, yeah.
I mean, she's only my neighbor, but I couldn't think of her name. I'm sorry. But yeah, Francine or Maureen, I'm sure they'd let you know.
Oh, that's a good point. Yes, I think that's a good point, because they're gonna know, they're gonna know for sure. So yes, if, yeah, if we could find out from one of them.
Well, I, I'm not the only department head who didn't know about the meeting ahead of time. And I didn't see the budget ahead of time. So it was, I hope that's, you know, I hope it's different this time.
So it sounds like we need to email Francine and, I'm sorry, who was the other person?
Maureen Grogen.
Maureen. Can someone, can someone reach out to them? Barb, I know you said you already reached out to Ed, so it might be overkill.
I did reach out to Ed and he told me that the Finance Committee was still meeting. Because the last date on the Finance Committee meetings was the 8th. And then the next one was like a whole month later. So I thought, well, maybe they're done on the 8th. He, and so he said they're still meeting. But I think last time, maybe things happened very quickly at the end, because it was so late. But it has happened before too, that they do it at this minute, so.
So if someone could email the two of them and say, could you please give us two days' notice? Because we plan on making it a joint meeting with, is that, does that address our concerns?
Yeah, does anybody know them or well enough to, or do, you know?
I, I do. And maybe either now or after, Barbara, you can let me know exactly what I should put in the email to make sure I've covered ourselves appropriately. But I, I know both of them fairly well, because I'm on two committees with them.
Yeah, basically, it's pretty short. It's just, we'd like to know ahead of time when the Select Board will be discussing the budget, because we'd like to post a joint meeting. Isn't that what it is?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Specifically two days ahead of time. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just say we want to follow the rules for open meeting.
All right, I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks, Jim.
And I'll CC you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Good.
Okay, so Dave is back. We're very glad to have him back from his surgery. Herb's side pickup is going well. We're up to 3,048 bags of stuff as of today. We're doing Tuesday and Thursday, 1 to 6, Wednesday, 1 to 4, Saturday, 10 to 1. And we've been taking out the new items on carts. Some people seem to like that. And we're still, we sold the carts with the for-sale items. People like the puzzles, I'll tell you that.
You know, that is such an impressive number. And I know there are probably a lot of repeat customers. But given that the population of town here is about 6,300, and we've given out 3,000 bags, I mean, that's almost like half the population, the equivalent of half the population. So I mean, I, I think it's, we really are an important institution in this town.
You know, you know, Jim, that's a very good point to, and tuck it, we should tuck that in our resource there, at, at the board meeting. Should, should it be brought up, you know, in terms of substantiate our budget requests? And, because I think you're right. I mean, that's, it is impressive.
Yeah, we could also include things, like how many people belong to the Friends or contribute to the Friends in numbers.
Well, I did put quite a few statistics in the annual town report.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they were from just 2020.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, some of the bags are for a whole family, you know, like, you know, a parent with two kids will take a bag.
Right. And I'm not saying that half the town comes to the library, but 3,000 bags. Even with repeat customers, that shows we're, we're doing a pretty good business.
Yeah, yes. And Emily is almost done that video about the behind the scenes, because I think a lot of people don't realize what we have to do to get the 3,000 bags out there. And it'll be fun. I think she's hoping to have it finished in the next couple of days.
It just seems every time like one of the sports leagues or something shows up at a town meeting, they emphasize the number of, you know, kids who are being involved in the game and, you know, in sports and athletics and, and sort of sell themselves as doing, you know, good work for the whole community, which they do. But we are also, you know, I think that that means a lot to people. There will be just to support us.
I was speaking to Johanna today when I was over there. And I was telling her that when I was getting signatures the other day from one of my villagers. And Barbara, you said you knew Jody. She told me that thank goodness for the library during COVID, because it saved her sanity all these months.
Oh, yeah.
And that was good to hear, that books and, you know, she's an avid book reader. And, you know, it, it, it made me feel good to hear that, you know, she lives alone. You know, her books are her friends. And she said it, it was a salvation for her in these long months.
Yeah, whenever I see Fred McManus, who comes regularly with his wife, he always tells me that it's been keeping them sane. Yeah.
Yeah, it was nice to hear.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. For me, the same thing. If I didn't, if I didn't have the libraries open, oh, so I don't even want to think about it, contemplate it. It's too much. Yeah.
Okay, so I've increased the speed from CW Mars. We were at the lowest, whatever it means, 5M over 5M. And so I increased it to 10M over 10M. And this is just the CW Mars staff computers. But Emily and Johanna, it was taking forever to download videos like Story Hour and Emily's stuff. So it'll take effect mid-March and it's a little bit more money. But so we're trying it till the end of the fiscal year and see how much of a difference it makes. Did everybody get Johanna's e-newsletter today?
Yes.
You got it.
Yeah.
Beth, you didn't get it?
Well, I'm gonna look right now, but I have never got, I'll just send Johanna a message.
Yeah, could you send it to her? She'll get, so I asked her to put the Finance Committee on the e-newsletter list.
Oh, good idea.
That's a good idea.
And the Select Board are on there already. So if anybody didn't get it, please email her or me. She does a nice, she does a nice job on it.
Yeah. I'll email her.
Great. So the phone line, I did talk to Ed again about it. And he checked his email and the Select Board did approve it apparently at some meeting for a second line. So he said he or his assistant will call. So he said he or his assistant will call Verizon. I have to call Hackworth to install a port. And I have to buy a new set of phones. Um, so.
How's that gonna work?
Uh, if if somebody calls and the line is busy, it'll go to the second line.
Oh, great, good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we desperately need it. Um, especially with COVID, but even before that, people would complain that the line was busy.
So where will the second phone go? Because obviously at the desk, someone would be using the main phone.
No, we already have four or five phones. We'll have to get a whole new system that uh deals with it. But it's not that expensive. I actually bought this system at Staples not that long ago at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, so I'll have, it's with a hundred and something and this one would be a hundred and something. I'll have to get another set. Um, we won't throw out the first set, you never know. So the last minute, it's not in the newsletter. Jerry Swanson said that Johanna could have the Frozen program back.
It is, oh, cool.
Yeah, because she had. Did somebody say something?
I said I saw, she put it up on social media.
Oh, she did, yeah, she's great. So um she, that that was uh super subscribed. I mean, it filled up right away. So only fifty people, so she already has a sign up for it, I guess from social media, I suppose. So it's Saturday, March twentieth at eleven AM in the pavilion and Anna and Elsa, they were great. Then on to the roof, we had another leak in the same place in the staff kitchen. And the roofer came and said it was because of stuff in the gutters and they cleaned the gutters.
That doesn't seem quite right, though. I mean.
Yeah.
Why, it shouldn't be leaking.
No, well, I, you know, usually I get the gutters clean, but I think with COVID I didn't. I forgot, you know, in the fall, so it was full of leaves. But you don't think that that would do it.
Why?
Why doesn't it just go outside?
Yeah, why doesn't, yeah, I mean, I mean, since there was a leak there before, how do they know? That it hasn't opened up wherever they supposedly fixed?
I know. Well, when it leaked the last time, the roofer explained to me that there's this valley. And there's a nail in it and he even showed us pictures of it. And so maybe, is it a weak area maybe in the roof and the water kind of, I don't know. What do you think we should do, Convy?
Yeah, I think we should.
That's a new, that's a new roof.
Yeah, I think we need to call them back. I think we need a better explanation. I I mean, I understand about ice dams. And how ice can build up and then. It can force, I, you know, you know, water in, but it. The fact it's leaking the same place, I have to question whether it's been fixed properly or not.
It it seems to me that the old roof went twenty some odd years without leaking.
Oh, it did leak.
For the whole twenty-five years?
No. No, not the whole.
Yeah, but I mean, it was just recently that we got a leak, uh, right, in the last couple of years?
Well, there were leaks before I got there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we did have a few.
In different places.
That roof was just replaced last year?
Yes, it actually less than, yeah, about a year, exactly a year.
There's a warranty that comes with that, right?
Well, they're charging us to clean the gutters. They charged us. I got the bill today.
How much does it charge us?
About three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty dollars to clean the gutters out?
Something like that, if I remember right.
And how much do we normally pay when we get the gutters?
I don't remember, but I I found out that Peter Frary will um clean gutters, so I think I'll have him. Because I used to get the guy from Pep and Roofing.
Right, yeah.
But he's pretty busy, so um I think he was about three hundred, but I'd have to check. And it was a couple of years, you know, before the pandemic.
Can I um, just because I just Googled this. Um, but clogged gutters will cause your roof to leak if the water has been sitting there for a very long time. So I I'm kind of with Convy that this sounds a little suspicious. It's not like we had clogged gutters for. You know, a whole year or something like that. I mean. Did we, could the water have been sitting in that spot for that long?
About six months, probably.
Well, I mean, you have to think, the leaves came off in the fall, so.
Right.
October, November, they probably started accumulating. Uh, so that's November, December, January, February.
I mean, the danger is that the clogged leaves can cause the roof to rot and they haven't been sitting there that long.
Yeah.
Has it, since they cleaned the gutters, how has it been?
It hasn't leaked since.
We didn't have that heavy rain either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there still snow on the roof?
I don't know, actually. I haven't gone up there. I could look from down below.
Yeah, right.
This seems like something where like a warranty window could be running out, right? Didn't we get this around this? I think that's why I think it might be good to be a little extra vigilant. Because if our warranty runs out, is it a, is it a year? Like, how long do we have?
It's probably getting close to a year because it was, shutdown was middle of March and that's when they started working on it, so very close to it.
Yeah. Uh, you know, Barbara, call Ed and talk to him about this because.
Yeah, I did talk to him, but you know, I talked to him when it was happening. He accepted the um their reasoning.
He he doesn't, he's not questioning it?
No, I was there with the guy who was coming to clean it. And and Ed, the three of us were there and the guy was talking about what it was and Ed seemed to accept it.
No one, um, I mean, I wouldn't have thought of it, but no one said, what about the warranty?
No.
Do you know if they put down that protective rubber coating before they put the shingles on?
They were supposed to.
They were?
It was in the bed, yep.
Okay.
Yep, it was in the bed.
I mean, if that's down, it would be odd that it would be leaking. That's, that's one membrane that covers the whole area.
Well, with the first leak, the guy said it was something to do with this valley with the nail in.
Yeah, they put a nail through the, they put a nail through the.
Yeah, okay, then that that could be a problem.
Could be a weak area.
Right.
You know, I have an idea. What if you like blame the trustees? This day, we had a meeting on whatever today, today's date is the fourth. And everyone was, had a lot of questions about the warranty. And the specifics of it. And so you need to get some answers to bring back to the trustees, so can they? What do you think about?
Yeah, see, I didn't get the bill for the cleaning the gutters till today. I just got it.
Yeah.
So um I didn't real, I didn't even know if they were gonna charge us or not.
I think, I think we need to follow this up because.
But is it better for Barbara to do it or for the building committee to do it?
Well, the problem is we, I haven't had any, I haven't had any interaction with the building people. So I think in this case, I'm gonna say Barbara. Um, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't do like a Zoom meeting or something. I'd be more than willing to do that, but I think we need a further explanation because in terms of the warranty. Uh, you know, we need to say to the roofing company, look, you caused the first leak with your nail going through. How do we know the the membrane has not been damaged to the point where it's allowed a second thing? And what happens two years from now? I I I think I I just need, maybe they can give us a rational reason. But I think we we should find out.
I bet they can't.
The guy really talks a long time.
That's why it costs three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's right, Maxine, you got that right.
Did we get another roofing company in, company come in just for a second opinion? Like, is this something that's really could happen?
Well, how about if I ask Ed if we can have a Zoom meeting on this? Do you think that's a good idea?
But I think.
Maybe, maybe even ask Ed if our building inspector could take.
Yeah, I think you need to talk.
Good point, or or just ask him, yeah, yeah. Good point.
I mean, ask Ed or the building inspector.
Building inspector.
Ask.
Yeah, let's.
Get the building inspector.
Okay.
I I personally feel like you need to talk to professionals, people that, you know, know something about this. But the problem is, will Ed act soon enough or fast enough?
Well.
A good question.
If we bring up the fact of the warranty, we need to find out to that. We need to say that, when is this warranty on this roof? When, when does it start costing us money if there's a problem? You know, how how long? I mean, the shingles themselves, of course, have a a warranty, but it's labor. And so I think if we approach it to that thing, and I would think that the building inspector. Well, I don't know the new building inspector, so I don't know his or her qualifications and background. The old one, I would have felt very comfortable having him come and and giving us an opinion. Um, but hopefully the new one is good.
Do you know who the new one is, Convy?
I don't know. I just, I just, I I don't know anything about them. I have had no dealings with any. No, I've had no projects yet. So you know who would know though is Art.
Art Lawrence.
Yes, Art Lawrence, because he, well, he was working in the office. Maybe he's not there anymore, so.
Well, it might be, the name might be posted on the website. I just was wondering if anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, the old one, was his name Tom Quinnlin or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he actually was at the meeting with, about the roof in the beginning.
Tom, yeah.
Wasn't he, I think?
Yes, we had Tom and we have the other fellow. I can't think of his name.
Yeah, um, another Tom, isn't he? He's still there.
Oh, that Willamette?
Um, his wife used to be a select board member. Oh, gosh.
Oh.
About maybe.
Is it Ron Lauren?
No, not Ron Lauren.
Was it like Willamette or something like that?
No, I can't remember then the last name, but uh.
Ron Lauren is his name.
Oh, Ron Lauren is the building inspector?
Yes, I just.
That's why I have on the website.
Do you want the telephone number?
No, I know who he is. He was the tree inspector.
Well, I I just got, I I just got a um, a little booklet from, I don't know if it was from the town or whatever. That lists some of the people, so I'm looking and it says Ron Lauren.
I know who he is, yeah.
Okay. Well, I I would, I, yeah, I I I would talk to Ed about the warranty first, that find out, you know. What's the timeline there? And then second, talk to this. Mr. Lauren and find out, you know, what, if he knows anything about roofs and what is his opinion.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if we do a Zoom meeting, would he be, if he knows enough to to then be there to maybe. Listen to the explanation that the roofing company is giving us.
Okay. You know. Okay, the last thing I already talked about, Emily working on the video.
Yep.
So Johanna talks about Storytime, which is still online. They're gonna have a live Zoom Storytime on March seventeenth for St. Patrick's Day. And seven families came for the last Zoom story in February. Uh, so it's still Miss Cindy Demon Diamond, who used to teach at Norris, is still the storyteller. And she's been very flexible, you know, being willing to work with whatever we can do for the, during COVID. So that's been great. She's wonderful. Uh, then she's hoping to bring Storytime outside beginning April seventh. Um, and they're gonna have a story walk to begin the outdoor story. So Johanna's, you know, we have this, these listservs that we follow. And she also went to a meeting of children's librarians on Zoom. And she said a lot of the children's librarians are hoping to have outdoor summer programs. You know, instead of doing so many virtual. Um, Ed Popilarchik has a a couple more of his magic shows. Um, and then she talks about the CW Mars Overdrive Catalogue and the access to Norris School. Which talks about Patty Murray, so they have access to a much larger number of ebooks this way. She thanks Faith Harrison for the plaque for Biblio Bear. And let's see, she's talking in the next paragraph, she has a program on Zoom, American Sign Language for ages ten and up. On two dates in March. And she connected that to the Community Read. Uh, you can read her paragraph because she says in Station Eleven, Clark, it counteracts his loneliness by learning other languages. So in the book, Clark is one of the characters who gets stranded in an airport. And so all these people who get stranded at the airport and survive the pandemic, they will end up, most of them end up staying there and living there. And, you know, they come from all over the world because they were flown in on airplanes. And so that's. What she's talking about there.
Um, am I the only one?
So that's it.
Am I the only one who doesn't know what Biblio Bear is?
Oh, um, well, it's in the newsletter. Uh, Biblio Bear is one of the East Hampton Bears. That Manchester Hardware had in its window and Manchester Hardware closed. And because of one of our patrons, Jewel, who lives on East Street. Um, knows the owner of Manchester's and suggested the library. Um, so Carol Perman, who was the owner of Manchester, could have sold the bear for quite a bit of money. But she instead decided to donate it to us and Johanna was very excited.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Maxine saw the bear today. I think Debbie, you saw the bear.
I saw.
I did, yes.
I love the bear.
Yeah.
I love the color. He just sits right nice there.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, I invite the trustees, you know, if you come in, if you, to let us know when you come in. Uh, you know, you can look at the bear and whatever, you want to see our new cameras. Maxine saw the cameras. Debbie, you saw the cameras.
I saw the cameras, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, come in and um, we'd be glad to show you all these things that you haven't seen or only heard about on Zoom. You know.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't, you know, pub, the public doesn't come in, but Keith David was there twice this week. You know, all these people end up coming in, so.
When do, when, when, when are we, is there a date for us to open up a part-time?
No, there isn't. We're still in the red, South Southampton. I don't know about tonight, but last week we were.
We, uh, we're now in the yellow.
Oh, yeah, we made it out of the red.
I just got the report.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I had heard that the numbers were going down in Southampton and that they had, they had a sense of where the cases were coming from.
Well, I think there's a number. Jen, have you been told where the cases are coming from in general?
No.
My plow guy, his family had had it, the five of them, so that's where five of these cases. Came from.
Yes, and someone at Town Hall, her whole family had it and found out afterwards. Uh, there are cases in the schools. We have two high school students who volunteer now from Hampshire Regional. And they know people who've had it at schools. And Jerry says that we have a lot of healthcare professionals who live in Southampton. Uh, there's families who've gone to Disney World for February vacation, families who got together for Thanksgiving and Christmas. And, you know, they go to Roots, I don't know. So, but I'm glad to hear it's in the yellow. No, we don't have a date. I'm sure we'll hear if Jerry um. Says we, that we can open. I don't think there's any date for Town Hall to open either.
Yeah, it'd be nice if you could go back to the two days.
Well, the other libraries aren't open either, West Hampton, East Hampton, Forbes. Forbes, they just come in and get their holds in the lobby. So um. yeah, well, you know, hopefully, the problem, also another problem is a lot of people having trouble getting their vaccines. So that's, I wish they would be able to fix fix it for us out here in Western Mass. I got my first shot.
I got two.
Yay.
I have both, yep.
I got my second shot today.
I just heard tonight in here in Florida, because the federal government guidelines is allowing teachers to get the vaccine. CVS, Walmart, and one other pharmacy is Walgreens are going to now allow teachers. And then FEMA is also set up a big place here in Florida, in our county. And so the teachers are gonna be able to go there. Is something similar gonna happen in Massachusetts?
Teachers are gonna be able to get shots starting, I think, on the 11th.
The 11th, the next Thursday.
Okay, that's right, Jennifer, you would know. Jennifer, where are they, where are the teachers gonna get their shots?
Right, CVS, same, same thing.
CVS.
So, um, yeah, but it's it's impossible to get an appointment right now, so.
Well, the problem also is the Senior Center in Northampton, which I went to on Tuesday, has been canceling a lot of appointments, hundreds of them, because the supplies don't come in. And a lot of people are really upset that I know. And Southampton people have been going there too.
Yeah, but it wrote, I think it reopened up. My neighbor, my neighbor whose second shot was due a week ago, she just got her second shot today.
Oh, she did. Yeah, my friend who was getting her first got canceled today, so it's really, it's too bad. You know, they don't supply us out here as well as.
Yeah, it's a matter of luck. That's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, with all the problems and everything, once you get to the site, it's amazing. They are so well organized and polite and it was a really very good experience.
Jim, did you have your second shot at the Senior Center today?
Yes. Yep.
My neighbor got hers too, Jim, the senior, her second one.
Well, I made. I got.
Was ushering everybody in.
Who?
Yeah, David Narkevitz.
Oh, the mayor?
Yeah.
When was that, Faith?
A week ago Thursday.
And you got your shot?
Got my first one. But we had a seat outside for a little bit, so I had a long conversation with him.
Yeah, Convy, did you have two shots?
I've had to, yeah, two. And the same thing, you know, once, once you get in, it just goes really well and they just very efficient. And so, yeah, it's, you know, it's getting better down here now that Walgreens and Walmart. And then they also have a, down here, you can call and register. In fact, I got a call on Tuesday because I had registered and to say that they, I would have an appointment. And I said, I don't need it. Give it to someone else, so.
Well, I think it's getting better here.
Yeah.
It's starting to get better.
I'm surprised that they don't, Jennifer, why not all the teachers, get somebody, do all the teachers at once?
Yeah, so, um, right now Stephanie Foss, who is our our head nurse, is trying to secure a clinic through Walgreens. Last we heard was probably the end of March, maybe early April. But now with J and J's vaccine that's rolling out, that could be an option sooner or later, so.
Yeah.
Waiting game.
Yeah, I know.
I want to mention one other thing is Pam Bernier has her papers to sign at the library. If anybody wants to come by curbside and sign it or come in and sign it. Yeah, so I think we have about 12 done so far from today.
I still haven't signed it.
You haven't signed it?
Yeah, I'm holding out.
Do we have any, any other questions for Barb and the director's report?
No, just Barbara, how how did the library have any problems with the windstorm?
Uh, we lost electricity for a tiny bit, not one, I don't think it was when we were open. No.
And no shingles flying?
I haven't seen any shingles, but I didn't do a walk around. Maybe I should do that. That's what the building committee used to do, walk around, remember? Maybe the building.
I'm gonna come back for a week in April, so I'll walk around when I come back.
Well, I'll try walking around when I bring my second sheet to get signers.
Okay, yeah. And Barbara, I I talked to Lucy and I just have to send an email and to her saying that you could pick up my my sheet.
Oh, okay. And then let me know and I'll pick it up. And then we'll get it signed and, yeah, so you need 32 signatures plus, right? So I need to get a second sheet, is that it?
Well, I, you know what, when when I went and picked up my paperwork, Lucy asked me if I needed a second sheet. And it's not, you can't make a copy of it. They they have to, you know, mark it down that you received a second sheet. And I said, well, this says 32 signatures. What do I need a second sheet for? And she said, because they're going to check the signatures and and that's what she, if they're, if they're not, if they're not voters, they, first of all, they have to live in town. And if they're not registered voters, they'll be scratched off, so.
I see.
So you want a few actions. Two signatures, but I don't know if they're all, my granddaughter turned 21, so I don't know if she voted if she's registered, so.
She better be.
Well, you know, also, they they just, they cross out signatures if they can't read them, I think.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's like what Jessica said, they recommend to get almost 10 more, just to be safe.
Well, I got 32, so I'm I'm tired of knocking on doors. I'm bringing my paperwork down to, back to the library and I will check the roof and stuff while I'm there.
Okay, and then leave the papers out and you'll get a couple more signatures.
And when are those due? Like, is next Thursday early enough?
March 22nd they're due.
Okay.
So to get back to Convy, on our last local call, the directors, we won't like open up everything right away. It would.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, it would go back to limited browsing, which is what we had.
Yeah.
Would be in stages, so.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I figured as much. Yeah, I figured as much.
Lilly Library is the only one in the area that I know of that actually lets people in the building.
Who's that?
Lilly Library.
Oh, Lilly, okay.
It's the town that makes this decision?
Uh, each each library, it's based on the director and the town, yeah. Yeah, and I, I'm, you know, he's also in Southampton. I don't know if he, you know, how close the relationship is with the Health Department because Forbes is doing something different, so. Yeah. But East Hampton cannot even open until they get their HVAC situation cleared up, so they don't. You know, she's got two bids. They don't have an HVAC system. They have a boiler. So she's like in the worst position. And I've been keeping my window open. And I I understand from the high school girl that they have to keep all the windows open, so they're freezing in the rooms when they go. They wear their coats. Probably it's true of Norris too, right, Jennifer? They open the windows?
Yeah, we have snow suits on.
What?
We wear snow suits.
Wonderful. How is it, Jennifer, are they back, you're back hybrid two days a week?
I'm in four.
Four?
Yeah.
And how is it working?
Good, really good.
Yeah, the parents must absolutely love you.
So kindergarten, first grade and second grade are all in four days a week. And third through six is still hybrid.
Okay.
And the high school, the plan is in April, they'll go four mornings a week.
Yeah.
That's what what the girl, you know, Riley Smith told us today. There, did you, did you know that, Jennifer, they?
Yeah, yep. They're gonna phase them in, so that'll be good.
You guys, I have to go, but it's lovely seeing all of you and good work, Barbara and team. Gotta go.
So, anything else, Barb? We just have a couple more quick things. Okay, so one of them is really quick because I didn't do it, because I forgot. I don't even have a good reason, so I need to create the email address and then share it all with. It was such a little thing that I didn't do it. So I'm just gonna shoot for whatever's not taken for Gmail, so it might be EPL trustees, it might be Southampton, although that's probably taken trustees. You know, I'll try out some different combos. I won't get too creative. It'll it'll be something related to the library. And then I'll share with you all that information and I'll give it to you, Barb, for, so it can get hooked up to the website.
Right. Jennifer, I'll put it on, I'll put it on the the website, the town, the town website, you know, as as our, as our thing, I'll put it there in our, in our main, main vault area, so.
Okay.
Once you get it.
And I had, I had put that I wanted to discuss some sort of recruitment tonight, but I, we've already gone an hour and I'm kind of mindful of that time and we're coming up on elections, so I don't know if it should wait. It's just something that I kind of want to have, especially maybe more when the library reopens, that we have flyers posted about what the trustees do and how you can get involved. I think that we should be advertising the work that we do a little bit better. Or a little bit more. I mean, better sounds like a judgment statement, but I think just getting the word around of what we do, I think would be, would be important. So are people okay with kind of waiting on this discussion? It might even just be a better in-person discussion anyway when we do that. And then, speaking of that, Library Legislation Day will be virtual again. I'm assuming it's April 2nd because it always is, but I will send the link after this meeting. Registration is open. So they will do the usual meetings, how to, you know, what's on the legislative agenda this year, what we're lobbying for as Massachusetts libraries, how to, how to contact your representatives efficiently. They usually have some pretty good sessions. Just knowing how all that, how the laws work and and what they're going after that year, what they've kind of set as their, as their mission. And I think this will be an interesting year for that with everything that's happened. So I can send that info after the meeting if folks are interested. And saves you a bus trip to Boston. Yeah. So anything else, any other business?
I might mention the hottest thing right now is the Dr. Seuss books. I'm sure everybody's heard about that. So the listservs are full of all these comments about this. I think the publisher is not gonna publish six of the Dr. Seuss books anymore.
Are you gonna keep them in circulation, Barbara?
Yeah, I talked to Johanna, yeah.
So I said, New York Public Library had to put out a statement that they were gonna keep them in circulation.
Yeah, some libraries are putting them into like next to the parenting books or in an historical collection or some. But, um, yeah, actually, I, someone said, one of the librarians said that all of them just went out. I guess people want to see what's going on, you know.
Yeah, you can't buy, you can't buy one. I was looking, just.
Oh, really?
They're selling them for like $1,000 for the books.
Yeah. They'll be worth a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we've had discussions and, but actually, this, we, this has been an issue for years. I mean, remember when the Seuss Museum, there was like three local children's book illustrators were very upset about this mural in the Seuss Museum. So as the librarian, say on the listserv, you know, we've known about this for a bunch of years and, you know, I mean, a lot of, like, I, when I was at the East Hampton Library, Pippi Longstocking's, the original version, whoa. We had a patron complain about that. So, you know, these older books, Indian in the Cupboard, you know, they're, they're, they're times. It's when they, you know, so.
Cackleberry Finn.
Yeah, yeah, right. So it's not like you want to get rid of everything, you know.
Well, I I'm surprised too that, you know, explanation, well, like the publisher just update the books, you know, and take out the things that people find.
It was Dr. Seuss's family that made the decision.
Oh, it was his family?
Oh, family too, yes, yes, family, definitely. But, um, but I think the thing is interesting is that many of us, you know, grew up with the books and and we just, we didn't see them as, you know, racist or that sort of thing. And that's not to, not to say that it isn't now, but we didn't have negative, many of us didn't have negative feelings because of reading the book.
Well, right, right now, the big thing is it's called Own Voices. I don't know if I've talked to you about this before, but it's been for maybe the last five years. If you go to a conference on children's books, it's, that's what it's all about, is own voices, like, you know, so people of color are, you know, really, that's who you see on the conferences speaking and there's a whole big movement, so it's probably part of that, you know. That's really gains. So.
Well, I mean, we do evolve. I mean, that's, that's important that we understand and that 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 things that were acceptable years ago is no longer, that's.
Right, and it's diversity, it's.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, it's interesting.
Well, watch those books, Barbara. Someone may steal them and.
I was gonna say, if they're checked out, I have a feeling you won't see them again.
This was another library on the listserv, so I I haven't asked Johanna if ours have gone out.
Yeah. Are there any other, my, my dog is actually banging her bowl against the door. I don't know if you can hear it.
Well-trained dog.
I think she needs water. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
I noticed that on the, I think it was you, Convy, that sent the Zoom meeting and agenda.
Yeah.
The password was wrong.
It was?
Well, you had 7726.
Yes.
Yeah, I copied that the first time too, Linda. 77.
I don't know if you happened to be the one to.
I did. I I put it on, I did. And now, you're right, it is wrong because when I tried to get into the meeting tonight, I couldn't get in. And I said, I wrote it down because I wrote it down for the, for the, the web thing.
It was 77.
And then I went back and I go, it's, it's 722 instead of 77, so. So, oh, well.
I just thought if it was an automatic thing.
I know, no, we have to put it on every time, every time. And I usually try to just cut and paste it because that way there, there's no typing, but this one, I, for the password, I did, I did type it in. It's a typo error, my, my fault. So everyone check it. So when next month, check it for me, okay? Then I'll probably get it right.
It's close.
So can we, can we get, if there's nothing else, can we get a motion to adjourn? And I'll do a quick roll call.
All moved.
Second.
I second.
Thank you. All right, Max, all in favor? Maxine?
Aye.
Jessica, aye. Jim?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Faith?
Yes.
Debbie?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Convy?
Yes.
And Mark? All right, thank you, everyone. See you at the select board or next month. Bye.
Bye.